We should start to put P's print.
Actually, I think this did.
Oh, he did.
All right, board, everybody said?
Yeah, he's.
Good evening. I call this special meeting of the Lakota Board of Education for Wednesday, September 28th, 2022 to order. Mr. Zink, the roll call, please.
Mr. D.
Yeah.
Ms. Bodie.
Yeah.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here. Board will move to number two and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. We'll move to number three, public comment. As a reminder, the public participation guidelines that we follow are stated in the Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy 0169.1. The Board values public expression on educational issues. The Board of Education also values an efficient and an orderly meeting, and this is a business meeting of the Board. And therefore, public participation will be governed by the following rules as outlined in our policy and also available at the back of the room. We ask our speakers to register their intent to speak, and I have a list of those who have registered for tonight. When you come to the mic, please state your name for the record. You don't need to state your address as it is on the registration form. Each statement made by a participant is limited to three minutes. We'll have a timer on our screen up front. At the point that you, as a speaker, see the timer go to yellow, please wrap up your comments so that when the screen goes red, you're completely finished. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officer. No person may question Board members individually. To protect employee rights, the Board doesn't hear complaints about names, specific individuals in public sessions. In the event that you do have an employee complaint, please contact your building principal, the superintendent, the treasurer, or the Board. We ask that you please be respectful of these guidelines. It's a business meeting. We don't want anyone to forfeit their time at the microphone. If the guidelines are violated, there'll be a warning, and then we'll ask that you sit down and forfeit the remainder of your time. We'd really like everyone to have a chance to be heard that wants to speak tonight within the allotted time on the agenda. With that being said, I will call several names. I'd ask in order to facilitate the timing that when your name is called, you'd go and line up over there. Don't forget to bring the microphone in so that we can hear you well, and please don't forget to state your name. I'll start with Ms. Steinbrink. And then Mrs. Ragor Raymond and Mr. Argo. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Steinbrink, and I'm a parent of two students enrolled in Lakota schools. I want to say how much I really love the presentation, the last meeting by the students who represented our really diverse student body. I'm probably not the only person here who had no idea that Lakota was represented by so many ethnic groups. I believe we are told there were 52 different languages spoken in the district. That is astonishing. A lot of colleges in our country can't even boast that. So thank you for allowing them to come. It was really a wonderful spotlight for all of us to see. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Ragor Raymond, Mr. Argo, and Mrs. Richardson follows.
Hi, I'm Amy Ragor Raymond. I also wanted to echo the praise, to praise the diversity presentations at last meeting. That's what our school should really be about, celebrating our culture and allowing students to bring their complete selves to school. I commend the teachers and administrations, administrators at Woodland for encouraging these students to speak at the meeting, and I hope that we will see more of these from other schools. I also want to push back on the notion that somehow celebrating our diversity somehow means that people are anti-American, far from it. I'm glad to live in a country where we aren't jailed criticizing the government or other officials. We only want things to be better and to live up to this country's potential. That's why I'm concerned about the CRT audit that was approved last meeting. I wasn't in favor of it to begin with, but if there was going to be an audit, I would rather it be done by a group of professionals that are specialized in education curriculum and in auditing in general, as well as knowledge about the topic at hand. I'm concerned that instead of a group of professionals, now it's been decided that there's random community members, apparently. Being a part of this audit, what are the qualifications going to be for these community members? I think rather than going down these rabbit holes and going down, you know, taking up a lot of time from our teachers and staff, we should be celebrating, you know, what makes Lakota positive. For example, just a couple of weeks ago, I was, I was, as an alumni of Lakota East, I was very fortunate to be able to participate in the Lakota East bands last few weeks ago for Tag Day. It was, you know, great to be able to meet, you know, former teachers and to be able to have a connection with bands and, you know, being involved with all the competitions that are going on. So again, I hope that we can, you know, focus on, you know, the positive things that our schools are already doing, rather than, you know, going on all of these audits and that I don't feel are necessary at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Argo, Mrs. Richardson follows. Mrs. Weber, after that. Whenever you're ready.
My name is Alex Argo. I've got three students currently enrolled in the district. So on Friday, the Lakota West football team and the marching band are supposed to be featured nationally on the Today Show. As a proud alum of Lakota West marching Firebirds, I actually met my wife and band at West. I'm looking forward to the Today Show on Friday morning. We should be celebrating the national spotlight. Unfortunately, there seem to be many activities going on that are detracting from the schools, the students, and their achievements. These activities suck up all of the Board's bandwidth and ability to actively do good. We have multiple investigations and eternal curriculum audit destined for failure, and a few Board members are even delaying the master facilities plan for what appears to be political reasons at great cost to the taxpayers. Let's talk about that curriculum audit. Before the last school board election, our current school board president worked with State Senator George Lang on a bill to outlaw CRT in Ohio, helping him with the definition. He thanked her at a Westchester Tea Party meeting. I'm glad she could help him, but she hasn't even provided a definition to the Board. This July, our Board President and two freshman Board members attended a Westchester Tea Party meeting. At this meeting, our Vice President leaked his plan for after the planned curriculum audit. This video was then edited in the middle of him talking, which seemed very unusual to me. I asked for clarification on what was being leaked multiple times and was given no answers by the Board President or Vice President. At the September 12th Board meeting, many Board members balked at the cost of the audit they had been talking about for four months. The VP again brought up his plan for auditing CRT. Our President then flushed out many of the details that had not been publicly discussed anywhere unless they were mentioned in the cut portion of that July Tea Party meeting, maybe. This community audit will prove absolutely nothing to anyone, and we will be right back where we started after we waste even more resources. I'm glad that we at least had two sensible Board members vote against it. The next day, the Board President elaborated even more details to a community member who was trying to clear up some of the confusion about the audit. When were these decisions made, if not behind closed doors? Our community deserves better than that. All of this is to say, I hope we can move on from these distractions. We have a rainy day fund with millions of dollars in it, and if we need to spend a few thousand dollars to put some of these distractions to bed, let's do it. I'd rather be talking about the marching Firebirds and our undefeated football team. I'd rather be talking about how we can get banned back in the sixth grade, about what we can do to get past some of the growing pains the gifted programs experiencing, what we can do to make some, make sure some average students don't get lost in the crowd, or how we can make sure that all of our students who need specialized services get the services that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Argo. Mrs. Richardson, Mrs. Weber. Mrs. Hartman.
Go ahead. Hi, I'm Jennifer Richardson. I currently have two students in the Lakota schools. Yesterday, I received a letter from my child's school that he will be getting a tutor to help him with one of his classes. I'm so grateful that he's getting the help with a subject that he's struggling with a bit. I would like to say thank you to Mrs. Way, the principal here at Plains Jr., and Mr. Solmski, my son's teacher. During the student spotlight at the beginning of the last school board meeting, we all had the pleasure of seeing Mrs. George's presentation, "The Colors of Woodland." I was so impressed by all of her hard work and dedication she has put into highlighting and celebrating the role that culture and diversity plays in Woodland Elementary and in our entire Lakota School District. The confidence and bravery that the three students from Woodland showed by getting up in front of a room full of adults was outstanding. The talented student drummer brought so much joy to the entire room. I would like to suggest that we have a similar spotlight for one of our newest Board members, Mr. D. I, and I believe others, would really enjoy learning about his family's cultures, traditions, customs that he brought with him when he came to America. Thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. That might involve Mr. D dancing. I'm not sure. Mrs. Weber is, Mrs. Hartman, Mrs. Cameron follows.
Hi, my name is Monica Weber. I currently have three children in Lakota schools, and I'm concerned because I've heard people suggest that our students should only be learning math, reading, science, and their filtered version of history. I agree, those used to be sufficient subjects as a baseline form of education. However, as a society, we've evolved and progressed, and we now know that every one of us is born with different abilities and disabilities and strengths and weaknesses. Exposing our students to those differences and helping them be aware of and how to handle their own emotions is now a necessary part of education. If we teach our kids more empathy for others and how to understand themselves, maybe we'll have less bullying and school shootings and maybe more healthy, productive members of our society. I hope Lakota continues to embrace all of its students, and thank you to those Board members who support that vision.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber, Mrs. Hartman, Mrs. Catherine, Mr. Neff.
Hi, my name's Amy Hartman, and I am a proud parent of three current Lakota High School students. We've been in the district since our children were in kindergarten. So we were here when levees were failing and the bottom kind of dropped out, and I remember standing in front of the school board when it was up for a vote that every other day kindergarten was a possibility, for those of you that remember that. So a long time ago, begging them to find budget cuts elsewhere, which thankfully we did, and I remember doing art lessons with my daughter's early childhood classrooms because those things had been cut to make sure that that happened. That being said, the growth and change in this district in the last five to six years has been absolutely phenomenal, and I would like to thank a few special people from the district who've made a difference in my girls' lives. First off, Carrie Montgomery, who was all of their principals at Liberty Early Childhood. Every day, she was out there tying shoes and zipping up coats and made it a point to know every student's name, and I promise that made a difference for them. Lydra Bug, who introduced my kids to the famous bug hugs and taught them the importance of working together and that they're all in a classroom environment, and they're all responsible for how the classroom ran and in working together. Debbie Hart, who helped my youngest through an incredibly difficult year when she was very ill and eventually received a celiac diagnosis. Wendy Harpring, who had, who had my daughter help grade papers in second grade because she knew didn't, she knew she needed more of a challenge, and Math Plus wasn't available in her grade yet. Ms. Teresa from the Van Gordon Cafeteria, for anybody who's had a child go through Van Gordon, you probably know who she is, and she is able to make every student feel special and loved every single day. Stacy Aiden, who encouraged my daughter to challenge herself and take advanced math when she lacked the confidence in herself, and she's now a freshman and still excelling in advanced math, which otherwise she probably would never have done. Eric Baumann, who was outside Liberty Junior every single day, rain or shine, at arrival and dismissal. Monica Dolick, who gave my high school student the confidence in math that she'd never had before that time. Samantha Miller, who is a phenomenal APUS history teacher and guides our children through healthy debate and discussion each and every day. And finally, Matt Miller for coming to this district and for emphasizing the need for updated technology in our schools, introducing therapy dogs to our children, increasing SRO presence in all of our schools, recognizing the need for fine arts to be supported, and ensuring that every student has access to a licensed therapist if needed at their school. These are all things that have made a difference for my children and our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hartman. Mrs. Cameron, Mr. Neff, and Ms. Brettis Teggy after that. Go ahead.
My name is Heather Cameron, and I have two students in the district. We've gotten to a place where the things that take place in these board meetings are exactly the opposite of what we are all trying to teach our children. Let me give you a few examples of what I'm talking about. Kids learn at an early age that being at school means there are a lot of rules that you have to follow. Even kindergartners understand that basic fact. When you are a new Board member, much like being a new student, you usually get some training about what the rules and expectations for behavior are. When we had a new Board member start in January, she refused to attend the training sessions that were offered to help Board members understand the rules and duties of a Board member. Now, time is wasted during every meeting because she is struggling to understand simple rules. What would a school do if a student refused to make an attempt to learn the rules and actually follow them? Two, there has been a lot of talk about things like CRT and SEL, and a concerted effort by many parents and Board members to push the national narrative that schools are indoctrinating children. Board members in the district have literally begged parents to bring them examples of CRT for the past year. As you know, no examples have been found. What does that teach our kids? It shows that a group of loud people can keep pushing their politics without facts to the point that our district almost spent 80,000 to find evidence in our curriculum that absolutely doesn't exist. What does that say about having respect and confidence in the trained professionals, our excellent teachers? It sends a message that parents have more expertise in the field of curriculum than teachers and administrators with decades of experience. Lastly, I have friends who have been threatened and harassed at board meetings over the past few months. Some audience members talk too loudly for one another, to one another during the meetings with a running commentary that often doesn't allow others to hear what Board members are saying. We can certainly disagree with each other on things, but the behavior of many adults who attend these meetings is not something that most of us would want our children to exhibit. The business of this Board shouldn't be all about political beliefs of one Board member. I want my kids to grow up to think critically and examine all sides of every issue. I expect the same out of each and every one of you. This district can continue to provide a quality education to all students, but that can only happen when parents, teachers, administrators, and Board members are willing to listen to each other and work together. We expect our students to learn that skill, and I expect the same from the adults in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron, Mr. Neff, and ramping us up, Mrs. Brettis Teggy. When you're ready.
Brian Neff, Lakota alum, father of five. So one year ago, I came out. And it seems I only get brought out when it hits the fan. And I'm here for the investigation. So a year ago, the CEO of Lakota decides to mask the children. So I'm going to come out, speak about, about that. And then over the last three weeks, it hit the fan again. It feels like the CEO of 17,000 students, at this point in his life, has no guardrails, no guidebook, nothing that tells him what's right and what's wrong. And my biggest fear is that this Board spent an hour and a half behind a closed-door meeting to decide how to wash it away. And now we can't because Cincinnati.com and the Inquirer publishes a huge article today causing reputational damage that cannot be undone for all of us. Even if you support this man, that's fine. There are plenty other states and cities that would welcome him with open arms, not here. We are Lakota. It means everything about this man's life, his personal life, his professional life represents me, my five kids, all of you, and all of them. We can undo that. I'm asking for your resignation, and I need all of you to step up. It cannot be washed away. My guidebook is Mr. ID's guidebook. I have my values. I don't press on anybody. Everybody chooses their own value path. Everybody makes their decisions and their choices. I choose mine, and I stay in my circle. I teach that to my kids. But when it leaks out of what his desires are, I don't care who he spoke to, thoughts becomes words, become actions. Let me give you a great example. The whole country of Germany followed their great leader, Adolf Hitler.
Mr. Neff, I'm going to caution you. Audience.
It is a perfect parallel.
We need to be respectful, please.
He has done great things. But that great thing has got to end, and it takes at least one person to step up and say it's not right for all of us. This has been my district for my entire life. I have two young boys at Wyandotte. I'm well versed, invested in this entire district for a long time. We need better. We deserve better.
Mr. Neff, audience. Mrs. Brettis Teggy, please.
Kate Brettis Teggy, I have three children in this district, one in kindergarten, first grade, and a senior at East this year. Again, I did want to say that I absolutely loved the diversity presentation, and kudos to all of the students and staff at Woodland who put so much hard work and love into that presentation to show us all about their culture and the wonderful diversity of all of the different families that we have in this district, and that is, that is a wonderful thing to see. I also wanted to give a shout out to Hopewell and everyone who organized the Walkathon there. They did an excellent job raising so much money, and the kids had so much fun, and I know mine are very much looking forward to their VIP party on Friday. And I did want to also say thank you so much to all of the various intervention specialists and speech therapists, occupational therapists, and, and psychotherapists who work through the district and help our children. I can say without a doubt, all three of my children have, have valued every aspect of all of that. They take great value in all of the services that are provided. So thank you, Lakota, for providing those services. And I would like to also address the CRT audit. Have a lot of questions about that. There's, there's a lot that, that I would really like to know. Considering that we are picking random individuals from the community for this, instead of going with qualified experts who have done this their entire lives, know the ins and outs of audits and how they're supposed to be run. I would like to know if there are going to be qualifications for the people that are selected from the community. What will the qualifications be? Will they be required to be educated to a certain level? Will they be required to have education experience in schools, in audit experience, in any kind of business experience? Will they be required to have background checks? Will they be compensated? Will the compensation end up being equivalent to the time and money that it would cost us in the 80,000 it would have been to hire the professional company? Who's going to determine what CRT actually is, since there has been a discrepancy on this, and several Board members have used not the actual definition of what CRT is, but how they feel that it makes, how it makes them feel when they, when CRT is quote present to them? Will there be any experts brought in to oversee it? Will there be meetings? Will those meetings be public? Will those records be public? If CRT is found, what's going to be the process at that stage? Are we going to start banning books? Are we going to start going after individual teachers and hunts on our educators? All this aside.
Brettis, I need you to ramp up, please.
That's fine. All of, all of this aside, how much time is this going to take, and is this going to be a constant topic at every meeting? Would this just be easier for us to have the professional company? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move to number four on the agenda, the executive session. Board, I'm looking for a motion to inter into executive session for the purpose to consider the employment of a public employee, to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, and to conference with legal counsel concerning disputes that are the subject of a pending or imminent court action. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D. Yes. Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. We'll move to executive session downstairs.
The board met earlier in executive session. We're now returning to open session.
Board, we are going to move to action item five, which is a resolution to approve the engagement of investigator. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaffer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there discussion?
Yes.
This is Bodie.
The police have confirmed that Matt Miller advertised on Craigslist for men to sleep with his wife is an act of date as dangerous, creepy, and beyond irresponsible. We do not need to spend money on an investigation when we know these things about his character. They are absolutely not character traits that you look for in a superintendent. He wants to be vindicated from his own statements. You need to heal yourself somewhere else. The board needs to put Mr. Matt Miller on leave and begin the termination process immediately.
Board, is there any other discussion? Mr. Miller, would you like to respond?
I would. Thank you. I think most people, if you've seen our board meetings, understand that I've been a target of character assassination as a result of my position. It didn't just start in August. It's been a slow build over a couple of years professionally, politically, personally. Your allegations are false. They lack merit and proof. I'm 100% cooperative with the Butler County Sheriff's Department. They appropriately determined there was no grounds for criminal charges. I've been cooperating 100% with the board investigation over the same false accusations and fully expect to be vindicated again. I'll continue to devote my career, my life to our kids and to our students, staff, administrators, and our community. And I won't let bullies and rumors and false accusations deter me from that work. Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Adi, anything? Mrs. Casper?
No, I don't have anything.
Mrs. Shaffer?
No. I would like to say that-
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
It's my chance.
Okay, then I would like to say something after you, please.
Go ahead.
Matt Miller's intent to shove himself down our throats tells us everything that we need to know about him and his willingness to drag the community through this situation.
I'm going to go ahead and call the discussion closed for the vote. Mr. Zink.
Ms. Shaffer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Thank you, Mr. Adi. Mr. Zink.
Sorry, I'm clicking. Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you all for coming out this evening.